I'm going to call this meeting to order. I don't get to do that very often. So, next we have roll call.
Matthews.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Flood.
Here.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Sehorn.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Tava Horn.
Alrighty, we got invocation again. We had a, seemed like it was just our day, wasn't it? We had a pastor lined up and, you know, life is what it is and something came up and he didn't get to come, so Commissioner Flood's going to pinch hit for him, so if you would stand.
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the ability to be here, God, to work about the business of the amazing city that is Shawnee, Oklahoma. God, thank you for blessing us. Thank you for blessing the city, God. Continue to give us your grace and mercy as we move forward. God, thank you for that packed house tonight. God, it's amazing to see so many people who care about what's going on in their city. God, we thank you for all of the things that we have in our lives and I pray that we don't forget those things. It's Your Son's name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Okay, so if you will join us in a flag salute. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. And as Commissioner Flood said, we really enjoy seeing a big crowd tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out. That shows interest in what's going on in the community. First up, we have citizen participation. Same rules as always. Please come forward. Hang on just a second, please, Holly. So, you're alright. Go ahead, go ahead. So when you come up, let us know who you are. Sign in, please. Three minutes to talk, 12 minutes on the same subject. Our city attorney will be our timekeeper tonight in tonight's game. And then, we will not respond to you. That's our rules. So, we are listening to you, I promise you. But you may hear our response and commissioners' comments at the end, so stick around and watch the whole meeting and you may hear something from one of the commissioners. But Holly, you're up. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, Mayor, it's been a few moments since I've seen you. Thank you for continuing to show up as just as you are. The mayor said, "I am Holly Gordon. I live here in Shawnee. I have worked in public health for over 12 years." Public health is based in science and it's evidence-based data. This isn't someone saying magical unicorns out here. This is science-based data, public health. We are still in a global pandemic. I've taken this pandemic seriously since the beginning. That's why you haven't seen me. I've been choosing not to come, but I have been watching on TV, so thank you. In the last few weeks, it's become even more serious. This last week, we buried my coworker's mother. She died in a hospital in Oklahoma City alone from COVID. This weekend, ooh, I thought I wasn't going to cry. This weekend, my children's father is in ICU fighting for his life from COVID. It's now directly affecting my family. This pandemic is not ending anytime soon and it's not political. Let me say that again. It is not political. This is a health crisis. This is not your right to wear a mask. It is my right to live. Please do not lose sight of that. These are people across our community. These are families across our community that are suffering, that are hurting. I'm directly affected. My children, imagine telling your children that their father is dying. Put that on for a moment before everyone else starts saying it's my God-given right not to wear a mask. Thanks.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Hope Burnett and I have been a proud citizen of the city of Shawnee since I was three years old. Masks are discrimination and let me tell you why. The Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, prohibits the discrimination against people with disabilities and guarantees equal opportunities for individuals with disabilities in employment, transportation, public accommodation, state and local government services, and telecommunications. I personally know a woman who is in a management position at Frontier City in our OKC location. Recently, she was forced by a mask mandate imposed upon their city to ask a group of special needs children to leave the park grounds. Fortunately, some of the special needs children did not have the developmental capacity to ensure that they would wear their masks at all times. This meant that the entire group was denied entry into the facility. I have friends who are always forced to wear a mask at their place of work, even though they have asthma. This means they either give up their job, their means of feeding their children, or suffer through multiple asthma attacks per day. Of course, any parent would suffer asthma attacks to feed their kids, right? But why? Why are these the only two options that our citizens have left? At the point to which our city officials support a mandate that allows citizens to feel as though they have the right to call other people disrespectful for not wanting to wear a mask, for being a victim of sexual assault, having asthma, being a diabetic, suffering from a developmental or physical impairment, is the point to which I will say enough is enough. It's time for our city officials to stand up for those who cannot stand up for themselves. We all have a right to oxygen. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, we got one here and then one back there.
Glad I was able to do this and thank you guys for being here because I wanted to, what I have to say actually addresses our very first speaker. I wanted to share some things. Oh, by the way, my name is Teresa.
Thank you.
And I've lived in Shawnee for a little over 18 years and proud of it. I want to share with you guys some information I pulled from the CDC's website. Just some snippet comments so we can move through it. Multi-layer cloth masks, it says, may provide reasonable protection. Recommendations to wear masks to protect us from droplet infections are based on the assumptions that droplets travel short distances. The general public should be educated about mask use because cloth masks, this is the important one, may give users a false sense of security because of their limited ability to protect us against acquiring infections. The poor performance of cloth masks continues to persist. The results do not favor the use of cloth masks. And I, go back now, this is not CDC, it's as simple as that. I'd like to point out that continuing the mask mandate, I believe, is deceptive and divisive. You guys are a part of the problem by continuing this mask mandate and not a solution because you're leading people to believe that their health and life is dependent on another person wearing a mask that simply doesn't work and often they wear them improperly. Wouldn't it make more sense if we as a community all get together to ensure and to work that people who really do need to be protective actually have masks that protect them from everything going in, like the top best mask? And then they don't have to be afraid and we don't have to be afraid. So as you guys meet and contemplate whether or not to extend this mask mandate, I would like to ask you to actually rely on science and not fear and not play on the fears of people that turns people against each other. And then I would like to leave you with this. I can't help but wonder, and I just contemplated everything that's been going on recently. If masks worked, why can't people visit their loved ones in nursing homes? If masks work, why are people dying alone in the hospitals without their families or a visit from their pastor? If masks work, why are businesses still closed in many of our states? If masks work, why are people still sheltering in place refusing to go back to work? If masks work, why do we have social distancing? If masks work, why does it keep you from spreading it but not from getting it? If masks work, why are cases still going up? If masks work, why are they releasing prisoners in California? If masks are necessary, why is it that the rioters don't seem to be getting sick? If masks are necessary, why did the big box stores in the peak of the pandemic survive without an internal pandemic of their own during the months of March and April with no masks? And if masks work, are you guys guaranteeing me that if I begin to wear one without fail, that I won't acquire a respiratory infection such as COVID-19? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ladona Breyes. You all know me.
Alright.
Thank you. Masks are not about the safety, but they are about power and control. They are about silencing a voice. The powers that be, far higher than city government, has started this snowball rolling and it has increased in size by persons who doesn't want a solution but want to keep fear alive. The just wear the mask and everything will be okay. If elected officials fought for a solution such as having the medication that is proven to help with COVID readily available to residents as they do for issuing mask mandates, individuals could get behind that and support that. But you're treating residents as if they don't have enough sense to come in out of the rain. That's the preferred method that's being done. Social engineering is indeed the method that Shawnee City Commission prefers. They've demonstrated that abundantly over the last few years and it benefits you. Governor Stitt hasn't passed such an action. Why would a city that has only had 1,203 cases out of a population of 31,000-plus? The numbers don't compute. Doesn't make sense. I'm confident that what I'm saying and what everyone else in this room is going to express is most likely going to fall on deaf ears. You're going to pass the extension. And the thing is, you knew in July, when you passed the first one, you knew then that you was going to extend it in September. And you know tonight that come November, you're going to extend it again. So at this moment, there doesn't seem to be an end for Shawnee residents unless some higher entity comes in and intervenes. This, right now, is about control of the sandbox. And right now, you gentlemen have control of the sandbox, right now.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vince Hassan. I moved to the Shawnee, Oklahoma area 26 years ago and I escaped the great north of Michigan. So I am very happy to be in a freedom-loving state and community, so. We read on the city site that there were seven deaths in the Shawnee area. And these deaths are tragic. They really are. But I don't think it constitutes a health emergency. 24 people from the best of our research died in 2018 from car accidents. There was no panic. There was no rush to mandate a 10 mile an hour speed limit to mitigate the rush, the risk. There was no shutting down of activities to keep people off the roads. The death rate for this is dropping. According to the CDC website, the death rate for COVID-19 is 0.4% of all demographics. For children, the chance of dying from COVID is 1 in 3.5 million, and yet we're making our kids wear masks to school. Case numbers are meaningless. We need to look at the death rate. Let's not give in to irrational fear and make the whole population subject to invasive regulations. This mandate violates our right to self-determination concerning our own health care. Many studies show adverse effects from wearing masks, including headaches, oxygen deprivation, high blood pressure, rebreathing the virus particles that you have and which can potentially cause brain problems. It can cause wearers to ignore other health practices that they feel that the mask is helping them. People should have the right to look at the risks and benefits of mask-wearing and make their own decision. The CDC and the WHO just a couple of months ago advised against mask-wearing. And a friend of mine just before this meeting sent me this from Friday that was just reported today on the CDUC website that says the CDC reverses itself and says guidelines it posted on coronavirus airborne transmissions were wrong. That was just posted Friday and reported today. They're saying that it's, they don't know now if airborne transmissions is even happening. The CDC is changing constantly. So I just ask that you would please let us control our own health care when it comes to wearing masks. Thank you.
That puts us over 12 minutes. That puts us over 12. So does anybody have anything else that you would like to speak on this evening? This subject, as I said, has been, got to reach the 12-minute limit.
It's a sideways thing, but it's actually not going to be, but they're right up the rally. Because I'm not going to repeat everything everybody said. We'll keep it pretty simple. And it really just boils down to accountability. You guys are our leaders. You're supposed to give us direction and give us guidance. And I just want to see what it is that's going to take for you guys to stop with the mandates. If you do decide to extend this, I want to hear what has got to change, whether it's a limited amount of COVID new cases, whether it's a vaccine that's available. We already have treatment. Let's push the treatments. Let's get those on the table. We already have hospitals ready to take care of it. The curve was flattened. Let the hospitals catch up. Let the health community catch up. They're there. They're ready now, okay? So this is, and even a prisoner knows what their sentence is. So if we can just get your thoughts on where you guys are going so that this isn't just rolling down the hill constantly, constantly, kicking the can down the street, kicking the can down the street. The other point I would say is that if you continue this, honor the mandate with integrity. And what I mean by that is consider how you've conducted yourself over the past few months when in the public eye. As leaders, you're constantly being watched and reported on and whether those who spotted you were confused regarding the venues or the mask mandate requirements at the time, the reports of hypocritical actions are out there. We're watching all of you all. So do not require us to do anything you won't do yourselves. That is all. Thank you.
One moment, ma'am. If you would, let us have your name.
Sorry, Deborah Waterman.
Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Okay, so has anybody got anything they'd like to speak on? On another subject.
My name is Aaron Lekizer. I've been here all my life.
Aaron.
In Shawnee. And I'll be brief. I understand you've gone past 12 minutes.
No, 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 you're fine. You've got your three minutes on. It's on another subject.
I have three things. The first is there is no proof that the masks are effective. Hasn't been proven by anybody. The second, and more importantly, is there's no proof that wearing the mask doesn't create a higher risk. I've been sitting in this room and I've watched pretty much everybody in the room touch their mask. And then they touch a pin, or this pin, and everything else. And we know the virus is spread by touch. We know that without a doubt. It's not a question like the airborne part is. So I would ask you to take that into account and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak on something other than the mask mandate? We have far exceeded the time limit on the mask mandate. I think I know this lady.
My name's Phyllis Fuld, as most of y'all know. And I just wanted to tell you all that we, me and some other ladies and some other gentlemen in town are trying to do voter registration events. We've had one already. We've got three more planned for this week. I'd like to see a lot more people in this town register. Right now, there's like 16,000 out of 32,000 people. Now, you know, I understand that probably 25% of those are children, people under 18, but we need to get more people registered and more people out to vote on the days that we do vote. The one that, the two that we're having tomorrow, there's one at CPN South Reunion Hall at 1702 Gordon Cooper Drive, and that's just south of Fire Lake Discount Food. And it's from 9:00 to 2:00. It's for all of their employees but also open to the public. All three of these are open to the public. The one that we're having tomorrow at Calvary Baptist Church, that's at 214 West Federal Street, and it's from 3:00 until 6:00. So if you know, if you're not registered, if you know anybody else, send them out tomorrow. If not, and if they're an early bird, we have another opportunity at George Fisher out in their front patio from 6:30 to 8:30 a.m. And it's, that's off 177 and Leo and Independence. And the public is welcome. If you do have access to a computer and can print that out, because they, the state still requires you to print out the registration, sign it, mail it, put a stamp on it, you can go to okvoterportal-okelections.us. So anyway, everybody, register to vote. If you have a friend that's not, encourage them to. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going, going, gone. Thank you very much for all the participation tonight. We should be to consent agenda. So is there anything we need to pull out of the consent agenda?
I want to pull item C from the agenda, please.
Item C. The minutes there, okay.
I'd like to pull item I, please.
Item I. Okay, do. Now, okay, you got it. Anybody else need to pull anything? Nope? Okay, I guess we're good. So we have a motion for the rest of it.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda with item C and I pulled?
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. So, Daniel and Bob. Alrighty, let's call the question on everything but C and I. There we go. Danny's got it. Fighting with the button. Okay, looks like passes 7-0. Thank you guys very much. So I guess we need to take these individually. Wouldn't that be proper? Okay, so, so let's see. We're to, to C, so.
I only requested to remove it because I was on the planning commission, so I just wanted to abstain from approving those minutes.
Absolutely. So anybody offer them?
I move to approve C as presented.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Mr. Flood. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so let's call the question on item 2C. Okay, six I's and one abstention passes. Okay, very good. So that gets us to item 2I.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, based on the fact that my wife is applying for urban renewal authority, I think that I, that's where I should have.
So that's why you pulled that out? Okay, very good. So is anybody? It's your pleasure here. We have a motion on?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Bob and Daniel, motion and a second. Let's call the question on the appointments. Alrighty, so passes 6I, one abstention. Thank you very much. Also, thank you all the folks that put your names out there to serve the city. We really, we really appreciate that and it was really great to see all the interest in that, so thank you very much. Alrighty, so we are down to the pet of the week. Do we have a pet this week?
No pet of the week, sir.
Alrighty, so moving on. Consider appointment of a city commissioner to the Community Service Contract Review Committee. We have, you're, okay, so you don't have anything? So any discussion on that? Anybody that would like to? I think what we had here is Commissioner, Commissioner Harrod.
Yes, sir. Since Commissioner Harrod is now off the commission, he was the commission appointment.
Right.
So we need one commissioner and we have three citizen appointments.
Right.
And then, of course, the mayor is on the contract review committee.
Absolutely.
This is just to appoint a city commissioner to that board based on the term out of Mr. Harrod.
Alrighty, so.
Are you looking for volunteers or victims?
I was kind of looking, yeah. I mean, I'm kind of looking right at you. I was hoping you'd volunteer because you've had the experience of working on the expo contract.
That's really a question to start with.
Yeah, that is. I know, so. But since you took the last meeting off, we were kind of conspiring against you. So that's what you get. So anyway, I didn't know if you would consider that. I would.
I would.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody? Anybody like to make a motion asking?
I'd like to motion for Point Barrett.
Point Barrett. There you go. Anyone like to second that?
I will second that.
Okay, so. There you go. That was quick, wasn't it? Yeah. Alrighty, so we have a motion, a second, to name Commissioner Rutherford to the Contract Review Board.
He made the second.
Second was by Mr. Flood. It's hard to tell, isn't it? Yeah, but anyway, so a motion and a second, so we'll call the question.
Do you think I should abstain?
You don't think there's any way we're not going to vote you on? Well. When you volunteer, you know what happens. So, six, six I and one abstention. Thank you very much. I think your knowledge will be very valuable there, so appreciate that. Alrighty, so, now we're to item five. Consider and take action with respect to a resolution of the city commissioners of the city of Shawnee. The city approving the issuance of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority. The Authority issuing its sales tax revenue note, series twenty-twenty. The note providing the organizational document created. The Authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of the note, and approving the proceedings of the Authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by, in between the city and the Authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues and containing other provisions relating thereto. So you can definitely tell an attorney wrote this, can't you? So, I think it was Ashley's up, aren't you?
I am.
Very good, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Okay, so this is to ask you to authorize the taking out of a note in the amount of sixteen million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is really an opportunity to monetize the sales tax that was passed in June of twenty-eighteen. We're going to get a fantastic interest rate at one-point-three-five percent. And some of the projects that it's going to go toward is Forty-Fifth Street, the Parks Master Plan, and also doing some remodeling on the fire stations one and three. So, we are financially able to bear the debt service. And so we think this would be a great way to speed up the projects and really impact the community. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions?
I'd just like to comment. Each of us have been briefed and we've had quite an understanding with the bondsman on this. So, this is not a matter of us not having questions, we've got those answered.
Yeah, so I, I think what's really great about this is that we would have had to sit back and wait for all that money to roll in before any of these projects would materialize. And the people of Shawnee wouldn't, you wouldn't see that. And they'd think, well, you know, we passed this sales tax and we're not getting anything for it. We've got a tremendous opportunity here with this, this crazy low interest rate that none of us.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure when they called Chance's chin probably hit the, the table when they, when they told them. Because I never in my life thought you'd see an interest rate like this. And when you weigh delaying those projects and inflation, what it's going to do to the cost of the, the construction, we are coming out way ahead doing this in, in my mind. So, we appreciate the briefings you guys gave us this week on that and the non-core meetings. And very informative and, I think this to me is a really good opportunity. But I think you've answered our questions very well, so thank you for all the hard work. And thank you for also keeping the city in a good position where we're able to take advantage of something like this. Because if we'd have been, had so much debt that we couldn't, then this would have been a big swing and a miss. So, thank you very much. Any other questions? No?
I'll, I'll move to, I'll move for the resolution on item five as presented.
I'll second.
Alright, Darren and Mark. Okay, we have a motion and a second, so let's call the, oh, we got to, you got to read to us, don't you?
I do. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, resolution of the city commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority issuing its sales tax revenue, revenue note, series twenty-twenty, providing that the organizational document creating the Authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the Authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the Authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Alrighty, so now let's call the question. Okay, passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Item six, consideration of an ordinance amending portions of chapter fifteen entitled Health and Safety located in chapter fifteen, article one, city of Shawnee City Codes and Code of Ordinances by specifically enacting the City of Shawnee COVID-nineteen Safety Code to be codified as section fifteen through six through fifteen dash fifteen of the code in order to provide findings and declarations of the city council, providing a definition of face covering. Requiring face covering shall be worn in certain places or settings, providing suggested guidelines for face coverings, providing exceptions, providing an effective expiration date and time, providing for enforcement violations and penalties for violations, providing a defense and declaring an emergency. So, Chance, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is, this is merely an extension of the previous ordinance that expires September thirtieth of this month to extend to November thirtieth of twenty-twenty.
Okay.
I'm happy to address any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I have, I have one, it's probably for Joe. Maybe it's multi-part. I've looked and haven't been able to find, so maybe you can comment on. Have we had any cases nationally where a mask mandate has been struck down due to civil liberties?
No, Commissioner, not based upon my research at this time. There is, excuse me, there are a couple of pending challenges, but at this point, none have been stricken down.
So we've had, we've had some lockdown orders. We've got rulings kind of all over the map on lockdown, stay-at-home orders. Mask, what, what I'm reading, mask mandates, we haven't had any civil liberties rulings that overturn them.
None that can, no, not that I'm aware of or that concern me with regard to the specific ordinance before the commission this evening.
Okay, thank you. One, two others, and then I'll defer. In the comments, we heard one specifically regarding ADA at Frontier City. And then, another person mentioned forcing our kids, I think it was Vince, mentioned forcing our kids to wear masks at school. This, this ordinance does neither of those, correct? We have, if I'm reading it correctly, there is an exception. Exception H would accept public and private schools from the city, like, they can enforce, they can have their own, but as from a city perspective, we've exempted schools. And then we have, under exception I, we have a carve-out for ADA.
Both of those are correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the extension.
So have a motion.
The date of the extension is not?
November thirtieth, is that not right?
November thirtieth, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's way down the bottom. Not. You have to look, you look in the online version.
Section fifteen twelve.
Right.
It's not in the printed part.
No.
Just making sure it was in there.
It's in there. I double-checked it three times, I think.
That's what I get for relying on paper instead of modern technology.
I'm trying to find that.
I believe you.
It's in there.
Sure enough.
So. Twelve?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Zero.
Okay, so we have a motion. You found. Okay, we have a motion. The chair will second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, there we go. Alright, Commissioner, very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. So we'll call the question.
He's got to read the resolution first.
Oh, do you have to read it?
Yep.
Okay, so we're up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending portions of chapter fifteen entitled Health and Safety located in chapter fifteen, article one of the Shawnee City Code of Ordinances by specifically enacting the City of Shawnee COVID-nineteen Safety Code to be codified as section fifteen-six through fifteen-fifteen of the code in order to provide the findings and declarations of the city council, providing definitions of face covering. Requiring face covering shall be worn in certain places or settings, providing suggested guidelines for face coverings, providing exceptions, providing an effective and expiration date and time, providing for enforcement violations and penalties for violations, providing a defense and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so now we will call the question. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Okay, so item seven. Public, I'm sorry.
Emergency clause.
Oh, the emergency clause, okay. So we need a, a motion on that then?
That's correct.
Okay, let's see, last time I think we had it built in, and I don't remember.
It has to be by separate vote.
Okay, so now we need to have a, a motion on the emergency clause.
I'll make a motion, we have the emergency clause.
I'll second.
Alrighty. Daniel. And Bob. Alrighty, so we got a motion and a second on the emergency clause. Is there anything you need to read on that? Okay, so I guess we're up to vote then. There we go, emergency clause passes seven zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, public hearing. We have a bunch tonight. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at ten eighteen West Benedict Street containing zero-point-one-nine acres from C-one, neighborhood commercial district to C-three, highway commercial district, case number P thirteen dash twenty. Applicant Ken Stafford representing Carol Ann Stafford, twenty-thirteen revocable trust deferred from September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty city commission meeting. So I think Rebecca's up.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, I'm well, thank you. And so tonight, I want to talk about the rezoning of this property. It's located on the northeast corner of Benedict and Kennedy. This area is mostly R-one, single-family residential. There are a couple instances of spot zoning that were approved commercial on this road, none which are currently active at this time. Our twenty-forty comprehensive plan has this area preserved as low-density residential. A lot of that has to do with the proximity to Shawnee High School being just four and a half blocks away. We want to keep traffic down local, we want to keep it safe for kids and families to walk to school. The applicant had indicated that the purpose for this rezoning was going to be for an income property to lease out to a business. And he was advised by his realtor that the property would be more marketable if it was C-three highway commercial versus neighborhood commercial at C-one. West Benedict Street is not a highway. It is not the same commercial corridor feel that we have on Kickapoo and Harrison. Staff cannot recommend approval of this item based against the future use map of the comprehensive plan and the characteristics of this district. I've included in this item pictures of the property as it is today. There are significant things that need to happen to this property for it to be brought up to city code. So I would also ask you to consider that when making a decision tonight. There is no concrete or asphalt. There's no ADA access to this building. There's only partial gravel on the Benedict side with no gravel, but two overhead bay doors on the Kennedy side. In looking at past utility accounts, there was no utility account that was ever found for this property. Today, if this building was built, we would require at least one restroom facility inside this building. So with that said, staff would recommend denial of this application. Planning Commission recommended denial with an option that it could be applied for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I would not even go as far as recommending the amendment. We have industrial to the west of this area, which is actually being used as residential and not industrial now. The other commercial properties are not active. And so this is kind of a really good opportunity to take this area back to its roots, back to its natural character as low residential area. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have on the item.
Do you have any questions?
You said planning recommended denial?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
I guess, I guess we're good. Thank you very much. So we will open a public hearing. So is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the change? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? And I don't see anyone there either, so going, going, gone. Okay, so we will close the, the public hearing. Any discussion up here, guys?
I agree with Rebecca, that's kind of turned back into residential.
Yeah.
Fifty years ago when all that stuff was built.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was neighborhood store, like, before we had big superstore type stuff.
Yeah.
And that's more of a residential street.
Yeah, and that's, it's definitely a lot different than, say, Harrison or Kickapoo, like she was saying, so. Definitely a different environment there. Anything else?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a recommendation that we follow staff's recommendation to, or I'd make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation to deny the zoning.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so Commissioner Salter. And let's see, Commissioner Matthews down there. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second. Joe, you're up.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I won't need to read this title if it's not a motion to approve.
There we go. That makes it just that much easier, doesn't it? Okay, so let's, let's vote then. Call the question. And we've got six I's, one nay, so motion passes to follow recommendation of the staff. Alright, very good. Item number eight, public hearing in consideration of, of an, of an ordinance to rezone property located at eight-fifteen North Harrison Avenue, containing one-point-six-six acres from C-one, commercial, neighborhood commercial district to C-three, highway commercial district with a CUP, conditional use permit for the purpose of a cellular communications tower, case number P fourteen dash twenty, applicant Troy Williams, branch communications AT&amp;T deferred from September eighth, twenty-twenty city commission meeting. So Rebecca's up again.
So this is the third application from AT&amp;T for a new communications tower for the Shawnee area. In their market study, Shawnee was in dire need for greater bandwidth for cellular services, Wi-Fi, internet access. The pandemic that we're in right now has greatened the need with people working from home, kids doing a virtual learning environment. And they have an agreement with the owner of SNS Salvage, which is located here at eight-fifteen North Harrison. There's a really nice, I have photos at the back of this item, but there's a really nice mature tree line that actually blocks the storage of automobiles that they have as well as the site where the cell tower would be located. This is a hundred-and-ten-foot monopole. I would make note that our code referencing communication towers is from nineteen ninety. Engineering standards for communication towers have changed greatly since then. And mostly in reference to an eighty percent of height fall radius is required in our ordinance. This is something that was. And this is something that was approved through zoning board of adjustment. As the towers, if there was high winds or an active god, they would just fall over. So that's 110 feet just falling to either side. Hopefully, there's not a structure or someone there when it falls. And now they've engineered them and enhanced to where they fall within the compound. And so they usually are in a 50/50 compound, and if something is to happen, they will self-collaps within that space. And it's also secured and fenced off, so we believe that will not be an issue. And we had zero opposition written or verbal with notification of this item. And I would note that the auto salvage that is currently there should have already been zoned highway commercial, but for whatever reason was neighborhood commercial with R1 in the rear. And so this rezoning application will actually bring this business use into conformance as well as the conditional use permit that is required for the approval of a communications tower. And I would be happy to answer any questions you all have. With that, staff would recommend approval, as well as Planning Commission voted unanimously for approval of this item.
Very good. Anybody get questions for Rebecca?
I assume this, like the updates to our code. I know that planning is working on code updates this coming fiscal year. Things like this will be addressed?
Yes, we have a running list of items that are really just, our code was archaic in nature, or things have evolved since then, so staff is keeping a running list of items that do need to be considered for updates, including communication towers when we redo our codes.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, they have a lease agreement with the property owner to rent out just a small, I believe it's a 50 by 50 area that will be fenced and secured. And it's rarely visible from the road, although you will see the heights above the tree line.
Right. Anybody else got any questions while we've got her? Okay, so thank you, Rebecca. We'll open public hearing on this question, so if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of, there we go, sir, come on down. Thank you very much.
My name's Troy Williams. I'm with Branch Communications and representing AT&amp;T. Rebecca pretty much said everything. It's to enhance cellular data broadband, Wi-Fi, and FirstNet for first responders in Shawnee, and we've been doing that in different pockets to, so everything ties together and is work seamless. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I got to sign in.
If you would just quickly there, sign in and we'll let you do that, and we'll see if anybody's got any questions.
No Christmas tree on this one.
No Christmas tree.
That is pretty neat, isn't it?
Yeah, we should have made Rebecca putting through the ringer a little bit. Could have got another Christmas tree.
She asked, by the way.
Good for her. Good for her.
You can't put lights on it.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, you bet. Thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor? Okay, if not, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing and move on. So guys, anything we want to talk about? Any shaking his head no, so it looks like he's good. How about you guys? Bobby, you got something?
Motion to approve.
Alrighty, thank you, sir.
Second.
We have a motion, let's see, so Bob and Mark. Mark was a little quicker than Darren. All right, Joe, I think you get to read to us this time, don't you?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending zoning classification to following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit parent tract. Description of tract of land in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 7, excuse me, the northwest corner, quarter of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section 17, township 10 north, range 4 east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, and more particularly described within the ordinance, containing 2,500 square feet or .057 acres, more or less, from zoning classification C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District with a CUP, conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll call the question. There we go, we have six aye and one abstention. Motion passes, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Alrighty, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located 6-20 West MacArthur Street containing 1.29 acres from C3 Highway Commercial to C3 Highway Commercial District with a CUP, conditional use permit for the purpose of an outdoor gathering space containing food trucks, on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol, pop-up shops and restrooms, case number P15-20, applicant GCR Sunset Enterprises LLC deferred from September 8, 2020 City Commission meeting deferred by the Planning Commission to the October 7, 2020 meeting.
I just wanted to explain the request for deferment. And this applicant was inspired by the Blue Garden concept that's in Oklahoma City. However, they didn't have a site plan or specific guidelines of how this area was going to function, hours of operations, parking, different logistic issues. And so staff decided to have a meeting with them to be able to formulate a document and lay out some specifics so that we know what we are approving. And we think the concept is great and could be very feasible. However, we hope to have that document drafted and back to Planning Commission on October 7th, and then that would come back to you all on Monday, October 19th. And so I would ask that you would grant that deferment with that information.
Very good, thanks, Rebecca.
Rebecca, are they still planning, looking at the, using the shipping containers? Is that part of the ask?
Yes, that's correct. So they do want to do operations throughout the calendar year, not just the summer months.
Right.
And they do want to have permanent restrooms that are ADA accessible made out of a 40-foot long shipping container. Again, with our code, that's not going to fit into traditional construction. And so that's something that will go to zoning board of adjustment for them to grant that variance. But we are confident that this is feasible and is quite doable for the area, as long as we can put some parameters around that and have something very specific laid out. So their expectations are met as well as you all's.
Okay, very good. Any other questions while we've got her?
I have a question. Since they're applying for a conditional use permit for consumption of alcohol, and they'll have to get those from the state and everything, would they still be allowed, if they say cold or whatever and they want to move inside, can they move that liquor consumption into one of those buildings that's south of where this is going to be and will end up with another lounge or bar or whatever you want to call it?
No, this would be laid out in the document only for this outdoor site. And from what I understand, speaking with ABLE Commission, they have very strict guidelines that Blue Garden had to adhere to. So essentially, that area is fenced off with a lockable gate.
Right.
So alcohol can only be served and consumed on-premise inside that designated area. And so that kind of prevents people that have, you know, a cup in their hand from wandering into an adjacent building or going down the street, those types of things. And those are ABLE Commission's guidelines, not ours. But those are things that we did want laid out in that document. So again, everyone was on the same page and expectations were met. And they've also agreed to adhere to city curfew, which is at 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday. And so they do, they did convey they wanted to be good neighbors to the surrounding property owners, and I think are very aware of the guidelines of the city as well as the ABLE Commission that must be met in order to do so.
Okay, so it'd be a very similar operation to Blue Garden, like you said.
Yes.
Have you ever been there? Benny, have you ever been to by the Blue Garden?
No.
Give you some time to check that out. Yeah. Alrighty, very good. Anybody else?
I've seen these. We looked one in Phoenix that was made out of
The shipping containers.
But the open air, all in the center was.
It's a great concept, and it's been wildly successful in Oklahoma City.
It is.
And I certainly appreciate staff's diligence over it because it would probably be a great, great addition to our community. We get one shot at it, really, so we've got to make sure it's done.
Yeah, we'll do it right, definitely.
Done correctly. It's a great asset.
Yeah, well, thank you for all your work. Okay, so since we're putting this off, then we don't need to open a public hearing, do you?
No, there won't be a need for a public hearing, but we'll need a motion to defer to the October 19th.
I'll move to defer.
I'll make a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to defer to the October meeting then. So there we go, guys, call the question. Six, seven, alrighty, passes seven zero, so we've deferred that item then. There we go. Alrighty, item 10, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property at 2124 West Benedict Street containing 1.00 acres from A1 Rural Agricultural District to C3 Highway Commercial District for the purpose of an indoor cultivation of medical marijuana, case number P16-20, applicant Executive Home Rentals LLC. Applicant withdrew application deferred from September 8, 2020 City Commission meeting.
That is correct. This item was heard at City Commission. We did have a lot of citizen participation from folks that received notification within 300 feet of this property that were highly opposed to the idea. And we had about 20 show up and about six folks speak. And so after that public comment portion, the applicant withdrew this application. So I just wanted to kind of put some backstory behind that.
Okay.
Questions? So why do we continue to bring this up before us take the time since he's asked it to be withdrawn a month or so ago?
I'm sorry, Bob, can you repeat the question?
Why do we continue to have this show up on our agenda when he asked that this be withdrawn over a month ago and we've continued to see it? Explain to me just why we need to continue.
Oh, I think it's required. I think any item that's on Planning Commission is required to go on City Commission agenda. It would just be how it's classified, if the item was withdrawn, if it's asked to be deferred, or if the public hearing is going to continue and they would like to see the decision-making of that application all the way through.
Was this not on last month's or last meeting's agenda?
Yes, it was.
It was. All the items, the planning items in the last meeting were deferred.
Were deferred to this.
Had to be withdrawn. Right.
It just seems unnecessary to me, if that's the way we
So just a housekeeping thing from a legal standpoint is?
It is because this body is the final arbiter of zoning applications, and the notices are specific to
Specific meetings, specific planning commission meetings. And then specific City Commission meetings because the public has been put on notice of the issue. It has to appear on the agenda.
Sure.
So that the public can be informed if they are relying upon the meetings for information.
Very good. Well, that's good. That's a good question, because I wondered that last meeting when we saw that that had been withdrawn, but
Thank you.
That answers it. Thank you very much. Okay, so that's been withdrawn, I'm guessing.
No action.
There's really, yeah, no action, so we move on, press on. Item 11, oh, this ought to be good. Acknowledged monthly sales tax and budget report. So I bet Ashley's up. She's going to bring us good news, right?
I am, actually. I have good news. So our sales tax was up again. We are sitting at about 20.37% of our projected budget per month, and we are even above prior year, sitting at 1.78% of our prior year. So year-to-date, we are sitting at 24.51% of our projected budget. In dollar terms, that means we're up about 1.2 million. Use tax was also up against budget. We are sitting at 5.03% above budget for the month, and for the year, we're about 4.7%. And in real dollar terms, that's about $27,000 above projected budget. So budget-wise, we are doing well. We have not had any major unexpected expenditures. The general fund and SMA, our two biggest funds, are looking healthy. Their revenue is coming in as expected, and expenditures are not exceeding what we would expect for this amount of time in the year. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this being September, this is actually our July?
This is going to be July finals.
That's just a two-month delay. So in July, we were up almost 1.78% versus
For prior
Last year, right?
Yeah, July finals and August.
That's all good news. You just keep bringing us good news.
I know. Isn't it great?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Just remember this when I have to bring you back.
We're not going to let you do that. That's not allowed. So, cool, very good. Have you guys got any questions for Ashley while we've got her here to grill her?
These are all good numbers, but we need to remember that we reduced budget by 12.5%.
Yes.
And so we're meeting budget, but we reduced budget by 12%
Right.
For this fiscal year.
But it's still good news, we're up. I mean, just this year versus last year, straight up.
But we just need to
We're in good, oh yeah, definitely. That's a good point.
Do we have any theories why we are up?
You know, it could be
My initial thought is more people are staying home and not vacationing, so they're spending dollars.
That could be part of it. It could be the stimulus money. It could be enhanced unemployment. It could be people are bored because nothing's open. And it's hard to say exactly what it is. Obviously, something is up, and it does seem to be, as we've relaxed, as they started opening more places up, we really started to see.
You know, and I've heard people say that, you know, there were more comfortable shopping here than, say, going to Oklahoma City. Not that Oklahoma City's necessarily a scary place, but I think
It's just more people.
You know, happier to stay at home, so
Yeah.
So we're just glad to be the beneficiary of that.
Oh, I am.
So, absolutely. Cool, anybody got anything else for Ashley? All right, thank you, ma'am. Keep bringing good news. Thank you so much. Alrighty, new business.
No new business.
No new business. Alrighty, Commissioner's comments, we'll pick on Mr. Salter first.
I wish a lot of the people that had comments had stayed, but I'm one of the persons for people that have many health conditions. And my two physicians specialists have told me to wear a mask everywhere I go. And I hope Debbie follows me around because she will see that when I leave my front door, I have a mask on. I don't even go through the drive-by without my mask on. So everything that I have read, masks or face coverings do reduce the chance of COVID. And that's all I've got to say.
I'm glad the budget is like it is, you know, I'm kind of interested in the amount it's increased and, you know, the reason why. So hopefully, people are staying in Shawnee and shopping in Shawnee, which is a plus for all of us. The mask, I mean, I think all of us hate wearing them. You know, it's kind of a minor inconvenience that may be a benefit to somebody. to somebody. So, you know, if we're a selfish society, we don't have them. We're not, you know, we do. So, yeah, I don't, I don't like them any more than anybody else, but I don't think it's that big of a deal, you know, in, in the scope of things. So hopefully everybody understand and, and, you know, try, try to wear them, you know, when they can. If they're outside, you know, most people you see don't have them on. You know, if you're interacting with somebody at a distance, it's not a big deal. But most of the medical professionals that I've talked to have said, you know, it is worth doing. So, here we are. Darren?
I agree with everything both of you guys have said. I've been, there are areas that, you know, they're, they're required everywhere. If you're outside, if you're walking down a sidewalk, they're mandatory. We're not, we're not in that position, so we should consider ourselves fortunate. A lot of the thing, the comments that were made, like, like you said, I wish they would have stayed to listen to, listen to some of the answers, if, read the ordinance. ADA is, is laid out in that, schools, churches, is, is in there. There, there are, there, it's covered and it's like nobody goes to read it or notices or remembers. My thing is, if it helps, which I believe it does, it's worth the inconvenience. I don't want to wear it. It's an inconvenience. But if it's gonna save somebody, if it's gonna help keep our kids in school, it's well worth it to me to do that. The kids have got to stay in school so the parents can stay in their jobs and, and our community doesn't go backwards from where we are. Some of the other counties have gone backwards and we're not. We're maintaining. I think everyone's doing a great job and we need to do this to maintain that. We don't want to change color on the school maps and the schools go backwards. We just, we, we don't, we don't want that to happen. So I'm not minding the inconvenience for a little while to help the community.
I also would like to echo that I am very pleased to see the, the tax report and the fact that, that we're continuing to, to be above where we need to be and, and hope that that will not be something that, that ebbs and flows, but is a continuing positive for us. And because we know that those dollars allow us to, to do the things that we need to do to take care of our city and make sure that we have the proper protections in place. Just very thankful to see that. And just also thankful for residents spending their dollars here when they have so many options of places that they could go. And just exactly, just really thankful for that. As for the masks go, again, nobody enjoys these. They're, they're not something that is, is, is fun for anybody. But, but I believe that if I can do something that may be an inconvenience to me to help somebody else have a better chance at staying healthier longer, then, then that is something that I'm willing to do. And just, again, say thank you to the city and the staff and planning and, and just everybody continuing to work hard to, to do things that put us in the, in, in the right place to be. Got very, very thankful for our, our staff and, and their ability to see and recognize things that will help us to move forward and continue to be, be a city that people want to be a part of.
Well, I saw some good news today. I saw something that's bothered many of us for a long time. The house on 10th Street that the tree came down on has, yeah, I mean, it, finally, and I know it's been a matter of priority and time, but it's, it's great to see that. And that leads me into what I wanted to bring up tonight. During the campaign, several of us not only talked about, but heard from people about the concern of beautification in Shawnee. The need for some serious work on serious places of business, particularly entryways. And I'd just like to find out, I want to visit with somebody on staff, the right person to discuss what we can and can't do. For instance, high weed complaints that we might have, a place gets mowed, but the, the weeds where it doesn't get weed-eated and doesn't get cleaned up is, is remains. I'd like to know specifically what we can do to enforce and, and take care of that. Another thing, some of our commercial businesses in town are really embarrassing. They're, they, they, we allow them, we permit them when they build. We're, we require landscaping, but we don't seem to enforce the requirement of maintaining that landscaping where the weeds are removed, where it's, where it's maintained. We're, we're proud. We're proud of the way that it looks in our community. So I'd like to know that too. What we can do specifically, one, to businesses that have been permitted in the last several years and the requirement and how long it can be that we require that the trees live or are replaced and that the bushes are, are the same. And then I'd like to know places, I, I, a good example is Kickapoo Street, where we have the retaining wall that's been built during the construction of the road. When the businesses don't take care of the weeds that are growing out of the sidewalk in front of that on the street side, they maybe take care of their property, but they don't take care of that. I'd like to know what we can do, if we can weed-eat, or if we can actually spray and weed-eat. But I'm gonna start staying on this for a while. This is a, something that's important to me, the way that our town looks, and I know we can't get everybody to comply. But I think that as, as good a job as our, as our groups are doing with the resources we have, I believe we could do a better job. And, and one more positive thing, I was gonna ask someone about the planting. When I was on the beautification committee is when we agreed to build the planting on Harrison Highway 18 and I-40. And that's something that in the last few weeks, every time I drive by, I'm so disgusted because it hasn't been weeded and cleaned out. But today I saw it and our crews were out there and they did a wonderful job and I really want to applaud with their big, busy time schedule, taking care of that. So a couple of good things there and a couple of things that I needed to just get off my chest. But I will continue to ask questions and, and try to talk to the right people, so maybe we can get some answers and get some, some progress on some of those. Thank you.
First, I think I want to start with, like I said, I wish he was here, but I think, just to respond to Ms. Waterman, I think, I don't have any interest in a long-term mask mandate. You know, I think we want all to go, we want it to go away as soon as we can. And I think, you know, we have November 30th, but I know, Mr. Mayor, I've heard you say it, we could, if the numbers improve, we could revisit this. And I think maybe we, we need to have that discussion. Maybe, Joe, you can help us find some things. What are the criteria that would eliminate it before the date? Because I think we'll all be excited. That, that being said, Joe and staff, I think you've done a good job. You know, I know we heard several issues addressed tonight and concerns. And I feel like while, while it's inconvenient, it's also fairly compassionate. We've added a lot of exceptions for people that have personal struggles. And so I appreciate the work on that. Also, I want to commend staff. I think the, the bond issue is, is, that financing is a great deal for the city. Recognize our bond attorney and financial advisor here, who are here, and thank you guys for your hard work on that. Because citizens are gonna see immediate, you know, results very soon on the issues that they said were important to them. And we'll be able to do more with our money because certainly inflation would be more than that interest rate. So I think that's really exciting. I saw the good news in the, in the paper about the parklet coming. I think that's gonna be exciting. I'm really excited about the things we have going on downtown as far as revitalization and more, more exciting places for our citizens to spend their money so Ashley can keep giving us good news. And I feel like downtown's really at that tipping point of becoming somewhere that is, is really great. And a lot of people have worked really hard, including the tenants who've been there for a long time. And I think they're all to be commended for the hard work and in personal investment they've put in. So just excited about that. One note, as a former planning commission member with Commissioner Salter, not the same time, but we're old planners, know that, that one item came with a, a recommendation for review and would just like to get an update on, because with October and the comprehensive plan coming for annual review, the status of what apparatus we're gonna use for those reviews when they're necessary. Because I think those are important. Legally, we have to have a comp plan and legally, we have to follow it. And, but we also need an apparatus because we can't assume it's 100% right. There are gonna be places where the community evolves and changes, or maybe the plan misses the mark. So I want to make sure we get that locked in as quickly as we can. But I'll, I'll join everybody else. Really excited. Chance, just keep Ashley coming up with good news. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
That's a bunch. Lots of good thoughts tonight. I'm gonna try not to go too long. Budget numbers, great job. Everything's looking good, which, you know, this spring, we were all wondering, you know, if we'd even get through the year. So, I mean, this, this is really good news, so I'd encourage people to keep shopping in Shawnee. Your, your sales tax dollars staying here really makes our job a lot easier to do good things here in Shawnee. Again, I want to thank staff for doing such a good job with the, the budget and, and how you guys manage our money. It, it really helps a lot when opportunities like this financing come up today. I mean, 1.35%, I mean, that's just a stupid crazy low number. None of us thought we'd ever live to see, and it's gonna let us do really good things with the folks here in Shawnee. I know one of the commissioners the other day in the non-core meeting, I think it might have been you, Mark, saying, man, if that number was like a two even, that was a crazy number. But all that, all that additional money went, went just to pay in interest, and that's no fun, you know. But we, we're gonna be able to do good things with it. So thank you guys for having us in good shape where we can, we can take care of those and actually take advantage of that. As far as the, the mask thing, everybody up here said it, none of us like wearing one of these things. I absolutely hate it, but it's a sacrifice that I'm going to make. I wanted to read this, because CDC keeps getting brought up. Dr. Robert Redfield, who runs the CDC, you know, told the Senate this week that he believed masks were the most, and that's this week, "Most important powerful health, public health tool we have to combat coronavirus, including a potential vaccine. This face mask is more guaranteed to protect me against COVID than when I take a COVID vaccine." He said, explaining vaccine would probably not ensure immunity in all cases. So the man that is, runs the CDC for us, and he didn't get there because he didn't know what he was doing, and he's done this to multiple administrations, he tells us this is the most effective way to keep each other safe. And that's a small sacrifice, I think, that, that we have to make. When I listen to my parents talk about sacrifices they made growing up, you know, through World War II, I mean, this is, this is nothing. So I think if we just do what they, what they tell us to do, wear a mask, wash your hands, social distance, and stay home if you're not feeling good, I mean, I think we come out way ahead in the long run. Lots of good things I've seen. Interstate Drive, if you guys haven't been up that way, there's panels being replaced up there in the concrete. Our, our streets staff is doing a, a great job in making that look a lot better. So kudos to them. They're doing, doing a nice job and it'll give us a nice place to drive up there. The demo on the, the street, the house on 10th Street, I think it was, 10th and Tucker?
Tucker.
Man, I'm so glad that thing's gone. And I know the lady that lives right across the street, she sent me a video of that this morning. She was so appreciative. And it's good to see progress there. Sad to see that happen to that house, but I mean, that's, I'm glad we're cleaning that up. The high mast lights at I-40 and Kickapoo that have been out for so long and so dark up that way, they are on and bright. We were coming back from the, the lake last night, so come down I-40 to Kickapoo, and those lights are shining brightly and they're converted to LED. And my understanding, Chance, those are the first LED conversion that OGN E has done on high mast lights.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm glad I wasn't the one that had to go up and change those light bulbs.
Mr. Mayor, that also includes I-40 and Harrison, too.
I-40 and Harrison, too. Very cool.
High mast, and then if you look in the center median of I-40.
Right.
On the lights that are in between the east and west lanes of traffic on the approaches to Shawnee.
Right.
And in between Harrison and Kickapoo, those were also converted to LED.
Very cool. Well, I mean, I just, I just think that's wonderful and that's nice and bright and, and looks great. One more time, I want to thank all of the folks that volunteered to serve on boards and commissions. It's the first go-around that I've had as mayor to make those appointments. And I appreciate my colleagues up here ratifying those tonight. It was so nice to see so many people put in to serve the city on those boards and commissions. You know, the greatest fear is that you don't get anybody. And then, you know, here we had people coming out of the woodwork to do that. So it shows that people are interested in city government and they're, and they're ready to volunteer and help out, and we are ready to put you to work. And I appreciate you being willing to serve on the contract review board for us. And I know that we'll, we'll benefit from that. So with all that, man, we were talking a bunch this week. When you were gone, nobody wanted to talk. I don't know what that was all about. But anyway, we will move on. So we are adjourned and we will go to the Shawnee Airport Authority. So, let's roll over to that. So we have got the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out of that? How about a motion to?
Move to approve.
All right, Darren.
Second.
And Travis. Okay, motion and a second. Let's call the question. Motion passes seven zero. Any new business?
No new business.
Alrighty, so we are adjourned to the municipal authority. So we are down to the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out of that? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, we approve the consent agenda.
So, that was Daniel and Mark. So we have a motion and a second. So let's call the question. Motion passes seven zero. Alrighty, so now, item two. Consider and take action with respect to a resolution authorizing Shawnee Municipal Authority the authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, series 2020. The note in the aggregate principal amount of $16,875,000, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on negotiated basis, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving and authorizing execution of a note indenture, authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, approving professional services agreements and containing other provisions relating thereto. And it looks like Ashley is up.
I am. Okay, so this is just the secondary action that is needed for the issuance of that note. So same details as before, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think we've, I think we're all good. So thank you so much, Ashley. So, any discussion up here? I mean, I'm good. That's an amazing deal. That's probably one of the easiest things I think I've done since I've been here in two years. It's 1.35? Was it, oh, you said, well, I want some of that money. Well, you can't borrow money like that. That's crazy. Okay, so we need a motion and a second. Mark, alrighty.
Second.
Who did that?
Neither one.
Darren did. We'll let Darren in on the phone. Alrighty, so motion and a second. Let's call the question, or do we?
Yeah, I'll read the title, Mr. Mayor. A resolution authorizing the Shawnee Municipal Authority to issue sales tax revenue note, series 2020, in the aggregate principal amount of $16,875,000, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving and authorizing execution of a note indenture, authorizing the issuance, and securing the payment of the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, approving. the transaction, approving professional services agreements, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Right, very good. Now we've got a motion and a second, so we can call the question. Motion passes seven zero. Very good. New business?
No new business.
No new business, so we're out of here. We are adjourned.